Even.
Really?
Yeah. Josh. Only thirty bucks.
She got time.
All right. Why don't we call the meeting to order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. All members of council are present, including Counselor Miller, who is with us via telephone. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Counselor Polling. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Haugen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All the comments, is there anyone that would like to comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good.
Good evening.
It feels like morning. It's been one of the days.
State your name and city for the record.
Yep, my name is Marissa Jacobs and I reside in Scapoose, Oregon. Good evening, Mayor Burge, City Council and City staff. I'm speaking to you this evening as a citizen of Scapoose. As a daily park user and advocate against extending Captain Roger Crusoe away to Smith, I'm sharing with you a scene none of you may have been blessed to have witnessed. Last Thursday evening, while a baseball game was underway, about twenty teenagers were running and playing along the creek behind the maintenance shed and between the dog park. If only I had a phone on me to record them running, laughing and playing out and around the creek because it was just pure joy watching these young people interact with nature and not with their iPhones. The more time I spend at the park, the more time I reflect on what an opportunity Scapoose has with the Grabhorn property. An opportunity to expand the footprint of veterans while preserving the natural landscape and habitats living around the creek. Interesting fact, besides the two covered shelters, the creek between the dog park and the maintenance shed is the only natural shaded section of the park where you want to expand the road. On sunny days, groups of people can be seen sitting and walking in the shade. I read that Scapoose has a high native population. Many people who are born and raised in Scapoose stay or return to Scapoose. And as a person who's traveled and lived many places around the world, I can understand why so many people would return here. It's a beautiful, peaceful and friendly place to make a home. It would be a shame if council were overly aggressive to utilize natural park space to be destroyed and covered by concrete or a road that is unwarranted and unwanted. Just because you can doesn't automatically translate into you must do. What was considered a possibility five years ago doesn't need to make sense now. And I hope council will listen to the Parks and Recreation Committee and take their recommendations seriously. The committee is working hard towards laying the groundwork for a holistic approach to the Scapoose's park systems. Work that is desperately needed for such a jewel of a town. Growth is necessary, but not at every turn. Not every plot needs to be overly engineered. Sometimes it's okay to be small and not large. Sincerely, Marissa.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment?
Yes, I'd like to comment. My name is Peggy LeBlanc. My, I live here in Scapoose. My husband and I, James, own the property that runs fully adjacent to the Grabhorn now City of Scapoose property. And moreover, I have lived here for the majority of my life. I was raised here and my family has lived here. My mom, who currently lives here in the family home above this property, is ninety-eight years old. So we have a unique perspective on this land and the Grabhorn property. I have sent a letter to the City of Scapoose. And within that letter, which is too lengthy for me to read, is a view of our history, the concerns I have for the proposed plan, my comments, and in general, the development. I sent the letter to the mayor, the interim city manager, all city council and Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee meeting members, as well as the police and fire chief. I would, at this time, instead of trying to review that letter in such a short period of time, respectfully ask that one of the city council members who feel a need to fulfill his or her responsibility as a representative to the public, read this letter out loud so that the weight of it can be fully felt and become public record for this meeting for anyone attending today or accessing it in the future. Further, I would request that in full transparency and to go along with the bulletin and surveys that you have been sending out, that this letter be incorporated in the next mailing of the utility bill or emailing and also pasted on the city's Facebook or other social media pages. I very much thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today. And I really am very hopeful that one of you will come forth and read my letter. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Peggy. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? I'm putting on our Peggy's request. I'll read the letter into the record right now. It just says, "To the City of Scapoose, Oregon, as our property, LeBlanc Shoemaker Family Trust sets adjacent to the full length of the Grabhorn property is profoundly impacted by its development, we are submitting comments on the proposals being set forth. Additionally, we are adding our observations on the personality of the land and our concerns for the experience of living by Veterans Park since its establishment. We have an invested interest in the development of this land as we are the only private residence that now resides adjacent to both park properties, neither of which were in existence when we built here. One had no residence, another had a single home residence at the time. Observance of the land and history of the larger incense cedar trees. Being lived at this location for twenty-three years and myself having grown up just above this property, as well as having family that have lived above the property for over ninety years, have a unique perspective on the land in which the park will be established. Incense cedar trees were planted sixty-plus years ago by my father, who just recently passed away. We have a great deal of money preserving their beauty and health. When we heard the possibility of the trees coming down, it was more than devastating to us. We would not be agreeable to their removal and would pursue avenues to prevent this from happening. It was also extremely disturbing that we have not been notified in any form or way that our trees were being considered for removal. Property innately is home to migratory birds and other wildlife, extremely wet and soft in the winter months. There's standing water up to the property line with heavy rains and underground springs, which become visible during wet months of the year. It's susceptible to liquid action beyond the flood hazard area. Concern. I'd question, even with migration, the viability of the land for evacuation road in the event of a hundred-year flood or similar as well as large or too severe earthquake. Our well sits in close proximity to the park property and we would request an analysis from the USGS Hydrologist Determin of Construction done on the park would contaminate the water that feeds our well. Seepage feeds aquifers. Road construction, parking lot construction, or pool splash pad construction does present possibility of contamination. Opinion, it is the property, it is a property unique in its setting. This day and age of climate change, environmental protection, green spaces and a definite need to de-escalate development of these endangered and delicate areas, the proposal set forth is not protective in protecting the land while trying to interrogate, interrogate, interrogate with it. Scapoose has an opportunity to squeeze themselves by developing an area that could be an exemplary model of the park that lends itself to peaceful, non-invasive intermingling of nature and human interaction. Land itself will migrate of possibilities to add trees, paths, walking and biking, quiet areas with strategic bench table placements throughout the entire park. Consider a simple mode area for children to play. You could have horseshoes, badminton, croquet, quiet fun things that can be done by older adults as well. Soccer, baseball and splash pads are geared to young people only. We have noticed simple enjoyment of the land as is. Children playing tag football and other activities such as riding bikes and generally having fun. Adults walk their dogs or just walk utilizing the open space. With walking and biking paths and the places to sit, it could attract people of all ages to physically and mentally exercise mind and body. Rose Road, parking lots, sports field, disc golf, pickleball, tennis courts and a swimming splash pool pads are all counterproductive to a low-impact development of a neat natural setting are geared towards a limited amount of people that would, could use these amenities. They are, for the most part, loud and disruptive overwhelming any natural peaceful area you would develop next to them. Observations living next to the Veterans Park, the children's player is somewhat used, but not overly so. They do seem to like the swing set best. Parking lot is mostly empty and rarely utilized during baseball events rather than other people park along Cuchara Way and up the grass area by the bocce courts. Dog park is used more for social gatherings, whereas most dog owners use the open space of the park as exercise their dogs as well as themselves. I've witnessed groups of people that gather daily and walk their dogs on the pathway. That's the most used feature in the entire park and is fairly lacking in Scapoose. Also noticed that people avoid the paths closest to the road. Concern, I have witnessed speeding on Cuchara Way and have told people with people with fall further from the park use more roads, even an access road being installed in the park. Safety issue is very much a concern for these individuals, especially those with children, given that already occurs on Cuchara Way. Plan being discussed requires more than a minimal increase in maintenance. Veterans Park plants along JP West never been overgrown, grass clipped around them, and ninety-nine percent of the natural plant restoration along the Scapoose Creek is dead or overgrown with weeds. Really, there are handful of struggling plants still visible. It's very evident that the maintenance for the existing park is not overwhelming. Establishing this park should lean towards minimizing the impact of maintenance, not expect not increasing it. Evidence leaning towards the need to increase taxes is not desirable and irresponsible to suggest, especially for recreational purposes. Example being the cost to install and maintain a swimming pool splash pad, a seasonal one at that. Comments? Are viable alternatives to connectivity that are less evasive. Pushing through Blair, Vernonia or Manor to Vernonia, both viable options. Happy Valley, although county-controlled, could be upgraded. Bringing bridges up to code, earthquake especially, is really more a pressing necessity. I'd like to know how a cul-de-sac is as dangerous as a single entrance and exit property box. The undeveloped land next to the park property has no interest in developing. We intend to leave it as is. Property is not owned in any way by West Coast Shoe Company as presented in the ad hoc meeting. Fusion, we do not agree, disagree with certain needs of the community. We just do not agree and oppose how these plans, road park, address them. James and Peggy LeBlanc, Scapoose, Oregon. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the April nineteenth, twenty-twenty work session minutes, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting minutes, May third, twenty-twenty-one work session minutes, May third, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting minutes, and the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one work session minutes. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move to approve? Hearing a motion to approve by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel President Grayson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Community Enhancement Program Recommendations.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you'll see included in your packets this evening the totals on what is proposed to be awarded to each entity that applied. Mr. Mayor, do you want to go ahead and read those off, or how would you like to discuss?
So, everyone can see what the totals were. Came out to five dollars under thirty thousand dollars. That was awarded, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five. Probably just looking for a motion to approve.
I see a move.
Motion by Counselor McHugh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Polling. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
What is the procedure for notifying the applicants in the dollar amount awarded?
Will they get a letter and a check?
After July first. Checks are sent.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Resolution Number twenty-one dash zero seven, Extending Workers' Compensation Coverage to Volunteers. Chief Miller.
Yeah, in front of you is Resolution twenty dash zero seven. This repeals twenty dash eleven. And regards to workman's compensation coverage for the city, this volunteers, reserves, inmate crew that we may use from the courts for community service and that. This is just an annual thing we do every year. It's nothing new and nothing has changed to it.
All right, any questions? I have a motion. Mayor. Counselor. Haugen.
Haugen. I move to approve, I move to, blah, 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 blah. I move to approve. Resolution Number twenty-one dash zero seven.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Losowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Be opposed? Okay, number four, Resolution Number twenty-one dash oh eight, a resolution to apply for a DLCD grant. The planner, Oliver Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as you know, there is a goal that the council adopted, goal to do, develop a long-term community, comprehensive community vision, which we are referring to as the fifty-year plan that RFP will be going out soon, but one of the components of that is going to be an update to our twenty-eighteen Housing Needs Analysis. And then the other component with that is a brand-new Economic Opportunities Analysis. Those two documents need to have the same planning horizon so that we can use that as a basis to see what sort of land inventory we would need moving forward. There was paperwork recently released by DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They do have some Planning Assistant Grant money available. We will be eligible to apply now that House Bill thirty-one fifty-five has been adopted. That cleared the way for cities with population under ten thousand to apply for this money. I don't know how competitive we will be. There is definitely higher priority given to cities that are required to comply with House Bill two thousand and three. Those would be for the cities that have the populations above ten thousand. And then also priorities given to cities who have outdated Housing Needs Analysis by their definition, that's eight years old or more. So our Housing Needs Analysis is not terribly outdated. However, we do need to do the update. By some chance, we may get funded, and so I'm just going to go ahead and apply for the grant with, with your approval of this resolution to see if there might be enough funding available for us. So it could help. So, yeah, so Resolution twenty-one oh eight is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Mayor.
Counsel Losowski.
I'd be interested in knowing, so with the ten thousand dollars, if the grant was not funded, if we received the grant, would that ten thousand dollars then go back into the budget, or is there the idea that that ten thousand would be utilized with a consultant for other works?
Yeah, and so we have identified in this year's budget, a hundred thousand dollars that would be going towards that first phase of these studies. I'm not sure yet how far that's going to cover, but essentially, since that's already been allocated, the ten thousand to be used as a match, if we're not funded, would just, would just be used for a consultant to do the work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Losowski.
I move the council approve the resolution to apply for a Planning Assistant Grant for an update to the Housing Needs Analysis and improve the allocation of ten thousand dollars as a match.
Hearing a motion from Counsel Losowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Polling. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Counselor. I just wanted to offer a thank you to staff for taking initiative on this. These are the kinds of initiative that really makes, makes me and I think us feel good.
Counsel Haugen? Any other discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget consideration of the twenty-two-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. First item we're going to do is we're going to hold a public hearing, determine if the city should select or elect to receive state shared revenues. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone want to comment? Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. And look over to Jill.
Okay, so for Resolution twenty-one oh nine and twenty-one ten, the Budget Committee met on May twenty-fourth, and they received the budget document, the budget message, and a public hearing was held on the possible uses of the state shared revenue funds. Committee sought public input and approved the budget as presented that same night. This resolution, there's, since there's two, one to elect to receive them, and then one that says that we conformed to all the policies needed to actually.
All right. Do I have a big comments?
I have a question.
Counsel Losowski.
Jill, with the state shared revenue portion of this allocated revenue dollars, or my understanding is there could be potentially a reduction in that portion of dollars moving forward due to one of the valid initiatives. Has any projection for future revenues been reviewed?
They haven't given us information yet. We've heard the same thing, and I would seem to think that that would pertain to more next year's budget.
So with the future, is there could be an expectation that these dollars could be reduced? Be allocated and to have them. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution twenty-one oh nine and twenty-one ten to elect to receive state shared revenues and to certify the provision of municipal services that establishes the eligibility of the City of Scapoose to receive state shared revenues for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Hearing a motion to adopt both Resolutions Number twenty-one dash zero nine and twenty-one dash zero ten, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Losowski. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, adopting the City of Scapoose twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget. Again, this is going to be Resolution Number twenty-one dash eleven. We'll be having another public hearing on the budget, so we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to talk about the city's twenty-two budget? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Alexandra Rains.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'm going to go ahead and hand this off to Jill.
Okay, again, the Budget Committee met on May twenty-fourth and approved this budget as is without any changes. That is what you have before you. The Budget Committee did request that we put in a comparison chart that compares last fiscal year budgeted to actual. I've added that for each fund and department and placed that in this budget. If you want to see an example, that's on page one twenty-four of your packet. The total budget prepared is thirty million one hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and includes all the appropriations, fund expenditures, and total unappropriated ending fund balance.
Any questions, my counsel? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Haugen.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash one-one, adopting a twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget, thereby making appropriations, imposing and categorizing tax.
Hearing a motion from Counsel Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Polling. Is there any discussion?
Just comment. Jill, thank you very much again. Phenomenal work budget. Amazing, so.
Thank you.
Are you going to autograph this one?
Yeah, add to the motion that denies her retirement. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number twenty-one dash eleven, adopting the twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget, please state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Resolution Number twenty-one dash twelve, Supplemental Budget Transfers of Appropriations, Establishing Appropriations with the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one budget. There's another public hearing. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on any of these supplemental budget transfers? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Ms. Rains, or should I just move it over to Jill?
Okay, so this is two, doesn't really change dollar amounts in the total budgets, just barely moving it from to different categories. In the general fund, the municipal court department, we upgraded our software to be a hosted environment. Therefore, it allows people, if we needed to COVID and whatnot, if we needed to remote in from home or various locations, it allowed us to do that. We did not have any kind of, anything set up for that. This came upon us. And then for the water fund, we entered into a agreement to buy the excavator at the end of the previous fiscal year. It did not get, the payment did not get put into. Both of these are just moving one from capital outlay, materials and services to capital outlay, and from materials and services to debt.
Thank you. Any questions, my counsel? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Polling.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-one twelve, authorizing a supplemental budget revision for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two-one.
Hearing a motion by Counsel Polling, does, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel President Grayson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Resolution Number twenty-one dash thirteen. A resolution amending the City of Scapoose water rates, fees and service charges, and rescinding Resolution Number thirteen dash thirteen. Again, this is a public hearing on water rates. I will, on this one, I'm going to go ahead and have the staff report first, and I'm going to open up the public hearing so that people may respond to the staff report.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, so following the last meeting where we discussed this, when the consultant Steve Donovan was here, we did make all of the changes you had requested. And you'll see that summary is the annual increases to the base charge are going to be two and a half percent or the construction cost index, whichever is greater. We added the new customer block as requested, and then increased the commodity rate by customer block. Again, that's all spelled out in the resolution.
All right. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the resolution amending the City of Scapoose's water rates? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I, I think our thinking at the last meeting was not complete. I'm not suggesting we change it at this point, but is there, do we have a provision for large families who have low income for them to get any kind of offset for the water bill? Our discussion last time landed, we were thinking, well, if you use a lot of water, you're rich, you know? And a lot of people use a lot of water are well off, but they're also a large, large demographic. We have a demographic in Scapoose that are large family with low income, and they would use a lot of water. And our concerns seem to be, you know, the old folks that, you know, are low income, and that's a concern too, living on social security. But just hoping our decision doesn't negatively impact those large families with low income. I'm just putting that out there, but I don't think our thinking was a right word for it is, but complete in our discussion, so if that's negativity impacting those people, I don't know how many there are, but there's got to be some, then I'm not suggesting we go back and change it, but I do think that's a, we've been through a lot with that already. But I do think that that needs to be considered at some point. I don't even have an idea how many people there are. I don't think it's going to show up in water bills, you know, you know, with their income, so. But that is a concern. I, it didn't dawn on me until after the meeting, but just throwing that out there. just throwing that out there.
I would, I think that one of the things we can continue to do is maybe, I know like the electric company has low program. Maybe we can look at adding some sort of program where people can round up rates to help lower income people that might be struggling. It might be a potential solution there.
I think that's a really good suggestion, and I think that'd be a positive. And if we can ask for something like that to be brought up, I don't know what the income levels are, you know? But oftentimes, they use families that qualify for free and reduced lunches as low-income families, and I would say that's a very good suggestion.
I mean, we also know, you know, the numbers of people that get put under the turn-off list each.
And at least it's there. People want to take advantage of it, great, and we form them in our newsletter.
We'd have to have a design and, you know, look at something, but I think.
I think that is just an excellent idea, and I don't mean to suggest that we've changed this resolution, but we look at a, you know, had opportunity for citizens to contribute five dollars to a quote glow program. And how that could manifest is an argument for a different day. But I think looking at that is, it would be an important thing to.
Yeah, one of the things we do in the police department is we have the Salvation Army money we get every year. We help people with electric bills and water bills. We also have the community action team that we point them to. So there are, we are helping people in, in the community in that. Timmy Sue deals with that and does a great job with spreading that money around.
Do you think that we could, like, put a presentation on it so the council would understand?
Certainly.
Just be nice to have that understanding of that program.
Definitely.
I thought on this also is that when this goes out, this is not going to be overwhelmingly enthusiastically supported, you know? There's going to be some negative. And I think if we can tie something like the mayor has suggested with it, or I think that would recognize that we're trying to look out for everybody. And again, I don't know how that all shakes out, but if we could, you know, yeah, there's some people on staff that do something like that, maybe some kind of reduction in the water bill if they qualify for low income as a family.
I think that, you know, one of the things that people are going to notice is that you look at other communities that wait five to 10 years, and that was part of the discussion to do water rates, and said we've been kind of incrementally raising them over the years so that they, the revenues keep up with inflation, at the very least, and then other costs. So we're not looking at huge increases comparative to other communities that don't do that. You go to conferences with other mayors or other council members, and you hear the horror stories. And we've been through the horror stories of having to raise fifteen percent, twenty percent moderate increases, and they, you know, it's a much harder pill to swallow than making sure that we're being the responsible ones and saying, yeah, it needs to go up a little bit because of the cost of doing business.
It went up more than a little bit, though. I think. That's my interpretation of it. I'm not saying it's not right, I think it's the right thing to do. I voted for it, and I just think it's, we can kind of mitigate the issues with low-income large families. I think we'd be doing the right thing to help those people.
I think we'll start with that presentation.
I just wanted to give, that's sorry, this is such a teacher thing, and I would say that. I'd like to give an appreciation to. I just feel like this council approached this task in a much different way than it was presented to us. And I just wanted to give my thanks to the council members that stepped up and, you know, rebuttled against what was coming at us, and we took a more holistic approach. And I think in general, we all approach this from a lens of not trying to shock payers, but also trying to promote conservation, yet trying to balance our budget and meet the needs that we have in the city. And honestly, I'm pretty proud of this resolution, and I think that, you know, this is a council that, that has, has the best interest of great payers in our, our minds and in our hearts, and looking at something like a glow program or revisiting these and seeing what we're getting out of users would be nice to know, where we can see, has there been a change? And people are taking action in serving water? Or what are the numbers showing a year from now or six months from now? I know that it's hard to look at it, we haven't gone through each season yet. But I don't think that this is something that we should just kind of let go of, and then when it's time to, you know, oh, we need more money, let's look at those rates. That we're being, not just being money responsible, we're being people responsible and keeping in mind what we're asking of our rate payers. And also seeing the actions they're taking when those rates have increased and it's better to conserve than use. So I just wanted to say thank you for being empathetic during this process.
I too was very proud of the council, that whole discussion. Well done.
Better to get it right than rush it through. It's better to get it right than to rush it through. All right, do I have a motion for resolution number twenty-one dash thirteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Osowski.
Motion, council, adopt resolution dot, number twenty-one dash thirteen, a resolution amending the City of Scapoose's water rates, fees, and service charges, rescinding resolution number thirteen dash thirteen.
Hearing a motion by Council Osowski, you have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polling, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Osowski.
Uh, just city staff, I would ask that there would be a continued effort in providing best practices on how rate payers can reduce their water on potentially information around best times, best time to water or other best practices that could be shared with the community.
Also, I think by the time the newsletter is, will, will there be, there'll be notification in the next bill? This will be happening following bill? Or what is the communication to the rate payers on the increase?
Send it in the newsletter in the past. If I wouldn't do it, again, be effective, by sixteen, I would not see that bill, though, until.
And maybe in their August bill, could something like bright orange or yellow be in there that only has, it could even be a half sheet, but something that is just a description of where we're at, what it looks like. I mean, basically what this resolution is saying, I just think it's better to over-communicate than not. And for people to see their bill, sure, they're going to see an increase because it's summer months, and most people are using more water right now anyways, but sorry, more paper, but now everybody reads the newsletter, you know?
That's right.
And if it's bright and bold, and your water rates went up, I mean, that'll catch an eye, right? Serve water. Make that the headline. Conserving pays.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution number twenty-one dash thirteen, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do have one more thing, though, we didn't finish the thought. Maybe there's just not support for doing it.
I think we're going to, I asked, have to start with bringing this, what they're doing currently, and that's going to springboard this discussion. Then we're going to talk about.
Okay.
So you know what they're doing.
That's the issue I brought up.
Yes.
If it doesn't, I'll take your word for it. Okay.
All right, next item, resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen, a resolution establishing all fees and charges for the City of Scapoose, and we're sitting resolutions number twenty-sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-two, resolution, or fee resolution. Jill? I assume?
Either way. New fees are listed in red. Each department head goes through and puts their own fee increases in here. I don't know if Lori wants to speak since you're here, if you want to speak about yours.
Anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Held off on doing any fee increases last year due to COVID. I have included a few this year. On page two thirty-five, I included an explanation of some of the fee increases. Three of the increases are fees that have not been increased in more than ten years, and two of them have not been increased in five years. And then I do have one new fee. And if you have any questions, just let me.
In general, do departments use a certain percentage each year to kind of increase their fee, or they just?
A lot depends, like in, in the administration department, we've just added one fee, check reissue.
Yeah, yeah.
So building had some changes.
Building does do a percentage increase each year. Aside from that, I don't know that that would just be like a typical thing that we do. We, we, at least for planning, it has not been that way.
And the rates are increased by the resolution already. They were one point six oh this year, separate from the wastewater and the water ones that you just. That applies to the SDC fees. With the exception of water, because you had just recently.
Lori, I'd actually like to follow up, since fee increases are not a standardized process within your department, we want to stay within inflation, the market competitive. I would be curious to get your thoughts on how would you see it be best that you reevaluate these fees and that we can gradually incorporate fee increases rather than it being sticker shock? And that's ten years out from now, something is fifty percent more than what we were potentially, you know, whatever that.
Right, and so for instance, like for one of the ones that hasn't been increased for ten years, it was a partition preliminary plat, went from a minor partition of fee of four hundred, and I'm proposing it increases to five hundred. So not terribly high, considering it's been ten years. To answer your question, though, I don't know, I think I would need to think about, you know, what would be the best way to approach that. Certainly, it could be something that gets adjusted based on whatever the cost of living increase that the city has adopted for that particular fiscal year. Is that appropriate every year? I'm not sure for, for all these fees. But it would be something, I guess, I would want to consider a little bit more.
I, I, I think I and council would love to hear those suggestions.
Okay.
Support that moving forward. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I'd just say that your SDCs compared to a lot of other jurisdictions are, are quite low. There are jurisdictions where to, combined SDCs for a single-family house are over fifty-five thousand dollars, which is, you know, dramatically higher than your rates, and that your staff does a really good job of trying to minimize the expenses so that you're, so that people are paying a fair SDC that truly reflects the amount of work that staff puts into it, but also that they're not adding a lot of things that maybe other jurisdictions incorporated into their process that result in much higher expenses per unit. So overall, staff's been really kind of prudent in the increases that they proposed.
Okay, there's a public hearing. Resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to comment on resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Polling.
Looks like, I mean, for most part, most of these are pretty gradual changes overall. The biggest ones obviously are the, the water SDCs. Those were pretty drastic increases, is that just because of our upgrades and things that we're doing? Is that just to kind of?
Yeah, it's based on our capital improvement plan, and so that new plan that we had is what was used. And so it just looked at what we had to do over the next several years, and really those, so yeah, so those were changed in accordance with that plan, that's why they were. And I think they hadn't been adjusted in, since early two thousands, prior to that, too, so.
But that was also by resolution of the council.
Oh, yeah, no, and that was all, those were already approved. It's just, he was curious, and I was just mentioning that it is based on the capital improvement plan that's in the master plan.
And one of the choices we chose to develop, pay their full cost so that rate payers didn't supplement development. All right, do I have a, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen as presented.
Hearing a motion for resolution number twenty-one dash fourteen, is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polling, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Calendar check. Our next city council meeting is July nineteenth with a work session at six P M, a city council meeting at seven P M. We have canceled the meeting that would have been on the week of July fifth. Your anniversary is coming up in two months. So get ready, I expect the entire council to be running the six K.
Well, you'll be seeing me in front of you.
I don't doubt that, at least on how fast I'm running right now.
I'm super impressed and proud of you, you're rocking it.
All right, we have a Economic Development Committee on Joon, balloon, July fifteenth at noon, and then a Grabhorn Park ad hoc committee meeting at six o'clock, with the Parks and Rec Committee meeting at five thirty that day. The manager, you have anything?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to just point out again that you have a joint session with the school board on July nineteenth, and they have requested that any agenda items or things you like to discuss and cover, that they know about it in advance so they can prepare. So you could just please email me anything it is you want to cover with them. And then, you discussed reopening City Hall, city facilities on July one. I've got.
Yeah, I just have one thing. I just want to give huge kudos to the person sitting to the right of me that thinks she's going to retire.
Thank, thank for the thanks.
Yeah. We've worked together a long time on that, and she's done a phenomenal job, taught me a lot, and she will be really missed when it comes to this process. And that, she knows it in and out, and just a huge shout out to her, Jill Her, for the job she's done for the city. Her career here.
Do you have any, last council meeting?
No.
You have anything, Jill?
Last budget, though, right?
Last budget.
Lori, you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm just back from vacation. Trying to hang in there and. Thank you.
Let me get through those three thousand emails first. Theodore, do you have anything?
No, I think we got a new volunteer for our, our centennial, thanks to Megan. And his name is Robbie Backus, and he's got a degree from N Y U in economics. And you'll probably see Robbie around a bit, he's real enthusiastic, and he's going to be a great addition to our, to our team, so. Other than that.
Council. You know, it's going to be hot outside, so everybody stay cool, I don't really have a whole lot of that.
Mr. President Grayson.
A couple things, speaking of being warm outside, I just wanted to thank Asa for turning on the fountain last week. It was great to see his excitement, and I'm so glad that other communities have opened their water features and we're starting to get back to feeling a little bit more normal out there. I just wanted to reiterate to council that we have quite a responsibility and opportunity coming up now that we have opened up for applications to be received for our city manager position. And I just hope that throughout this process, we'll be able to follow the procedures and make best decisions for our city. And I wanted to thank our staff. It seems like any request or ask that we have the next meeting or phone call or email is the response to that ask or request. And I am so proud to have competent and confident leaders in our community, so thank you.
Three quick items. First, I missed last week, last month's or last, the last meeting.
First, I missed last week, last month's or last, the last meeting, and so I did listen to it, and, and I, I so appreciate the work of the Ad-Hoc Committee. They're doing a superb job, and diligent, hard-working, and what they've done to date is just so impressive, and what we end up with is gonna be just, I mean, what a, what a magnificent group of people to be associated with, so we should applaud them. And speaking of that, they're going to have their public forum on July tenth at four P M. At Concombre gazebo, so if you're able to participate in that, I think they would greatly appreciate that, to show your support. So if anybody in.
Four P M.
But, yeah, so it's a Saturday at four P M. And, and if it's raining, we'll be under the gazebo, so, you know, that's not too, that's not half-bad. And the last item is if there's any way that you can recruit people for the Centennial Run, which starts at eight A M., there's a six K and a ten K option, please go out of your way to do that. This is, this is gonna be something that's gonna be hopefully carried forward, and if we have a good turnout this first round, it's gonna just grease the skids for, for us going forward, and it's also a really good cause, so, yeah, thank you.
Council Osowski.
I just want to highlight to staff, I appreciate everyone's efforts, and thank you, and keep up all the great.
Council Miller, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a thank you to staff, it's obvious in reading through all the materials in the binder that they were very busy putting this all together, so thank you.
Thank you. We already passed.
I thought of something.
Okay. I was gonna ask you a question, so go ahead.
I just wanted to let council know that it, an official meeting has not been scheduled, however, it sounds like the second Chapman Landing Rezone hearing will occur sometime in August, and so that would be the second and last hearing on that.
Thank you. So, as far as the run, I've signed up, registered on training, I will be running, four nil. And I encourage anyone else to run. Question, Lori, on the Grabhorn property, those cedar trees are not on the city property.
No, they're not, and so.
The city would not be able to compel private property owners to cut down their trees?
No, and there are provisions in the code for retaining significant trees within a planned right-of-way, so there, there, there could be accommodations made, I think. That being said, the engineering isn't complete, et cetera, et cetera, but it would seem to me that there would be a way to work.
Well, it's interesting that, you know, their position was, they're never gonna develop that property.
They may not, but somebody else may in the future.
No time in the near future.
Perhaps not.
Okay, perfect. Well, everyone have a happy Independence Day, see you on the backside of that, and getting a jerk.